First order of business is to go into executive session for, we will, pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21. We'll discuss the town council contract pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2182. Town accountant pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 2182. And in most cases to conduct strategy sessions with regards to negotiations and also address the executive session minutes from August 13. So I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes. We'll come back at, by 6 o'clock.
Yeah, we have to, right?
Six o'clock. Six o'clock, right. We have, before we pick it up, I just have to make an announcement that the meeting...
Hold on, guys.
Sorry. Yep, we're opening the meeting. Thank you. The meeting will be recorded by Area 58. If you would join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First thing on our first appointment tonight is the tax classification public hearing. Principal assessor is going to come up and give us an introduction. At the same time, I think Cody will have PowerPoint on the TV screen over here.
Just give me one moment.
It'll work great. If you want, if you want to start before he has that up, you can, or if you need that. Okay. Yes.
Where's my... Oh, right here. Thank you.
One stair.
Not sure. Having you in the main. We got two of them signed in.
Look at that. I don't think I've ever done that.
Nope. Time.
Thank you so much.
That's fine.
I guess I should have said I opened the public hearing.
Yeah, public hearing, because it was a public hearing.
Yep.
That's a good one.
That's a good one. I'm not sure. Having you in the main. Okay, that's unanimous. Now it's got to be 21. Let me check. Deb, you stood up.
He went to the library.
Oh, is that where he is? Okay. Did you say goodnight?
Here we go.
Hey, can you still... We have some issues in the room. I think so. 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 I think so.
I can't, I'll go check. Deb, you stay there.
You went to the library.
Oh, is that where you... Okay. Did you say goodnight?
Here we go.
Hey, can you still... We have some issues in the room. I think so. 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 I think so.
We're good. Hey, we got it. Just needed to call. Okay, so this is a public hearing, so I will move that we open the public hearing for tax classification. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show is yours.
This is tax classification.
Could you keep voice up and talk right into that mic?
Yeah, right in, put it right there.
There you go. Or if you want, does this work?
Is it on?
Pop top it like that, just... No, it's not working.
Okay, now it's on. Can you hear me now?
Go see if it works.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
You have the show.
So the purpose of this hearing is to vote to maintain a single tax rate or shift a portion of the tax levy from the residential class to the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. There are five property classes: residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property. The town of Halifax has under 10% commercial, industrial, and personal property; therefore, a split rate is not recommended by the Board of Assessors. Real estate and personal property total value $1,443,640, which is up from last year 4.2%. These are the top five taxpayers in Halifax. The estimated tax rate will be $14.27. The average single-family assessment is up 4.1% at $511,243. That tax bill would be $7,295.44. The average condo condominium assessment is up 0.1%. Their tax bill has gone down 0.843% at that tax rate. This would be the shift if you decided to split the tax rate. Residential would be 14, if we did the one, the factor of one, it would be 1427. If you did 1.2, it would be 1399. But commercial, industrial, personal property would be 1712. If we did the 1.3, you can see it would be 1386 for residential, 1855 for commercial, industrial, personal property, 1.4, 1372, commercial, industrial, personal property 1998. And then the maximum that Mass General Law allows us to shift is 1.5, and that would be 1358 for residential and 2141 for commercial, industrial, and personal property. Town of Halifax has always taxed property equitably with a single tax rate. There are pros and cons of a split rate. State law allows for shift as a levy burden up to 50% to commercial, industrial, and personal property. A residential factor of one represents a single rate. The pros offers residential property owners tax relief. The cons are higher commercial taxes inhibits commercial growth. Higher commercial taxes can reduce commercial values by increasing their expenses. The result of reduced commercial value in turn increases the residential levy percentage. It's allowed by law, but is it fair and equitable? The Board of Assessors have also recommended to not adopt the following: open space discount. This is for land that is not developed excluding chapter land, permanent conservation restricted land, and income-producing parcels. The town is not protected by lien, and there is not a penalty for change of use. Halifax does not have parcels that are considered open space. There's a residential exemption, but cities and towns such as Bonstville, Nantucket, Cambridge, Boston, with high second home populations and/or resort communities benefit from this exemption. This exemption is for owners of occupied residential properties and shifts the tax burden on non-residence owners and multi-unit owners. We only have 68 second homes in Halifax. There's another small commercial exemption. Communities that have adopted the exemption have a much higher percentage of commercial properties. Halifax has 5.15% commercial. The property owner receives the exemption and is not required to pass the discount along to the business owner that may be leasing from them. Halifax has already adopted the exemption for personal property business valued at $3,000 or less. The Board of Assessors are recommending that the Board of Selectmen vote no to the above exemptions and in favor of the factor of one, which would mean the residential and commercial, industrial, personal properties are taxed at the same rate for fiscal '25. And then just to let you know that the excess levy capacity for the current year is $13,745.41. And that's it.
Okay. Any questions from the Board first? No? No? Any comments, questions from anyone out in the area? Okay. So, yes ma'am?
Have you seen this information prior to this evening?
Have we?
Yes.
We have the summary, yeah. Well, obviously Cody has, yeah.
Okay. That's really bad. For those of us who haven't seen it.
Oh.
Have a chance to read it, absorb it, understand it.
Yeah. Right. This is an annual event. Every year we have to, the Board is asked to make the decisions we're going to now make on the tax rate, whether, and not the tax rate, but whether to split the tax rate essentially, and also on these three other potential exemptions. So every year we have to vote on them. So circumstances haven't changed in 38 years that I've been doing this, so I don't think it's nothing different.
Probably never will.
Yeah, at least at this point. Okay, so if that being said, there's no other comments or questions, I'll move that we close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing's closed, now we need to vote. So I will move that we follow the Board of Assessors' recommendation and use a factor of one, meaning that the residential and commercial and industrial, all of the tax rate will remain, will all be the same at $14.27.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And then on the, if there are three issues here, so the first exemption, I will vote, I will move that we, oh, not, okay, that's helpful. I'll move that we not adopt an open space discount. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Secondly, I'll move not to adopt a residential exemption.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And finally, I will move that we not adopt a small commercial exemption.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. All of the recommendations of the Board of Assessors have been followed, and we've made our decision for the year. Thank you for your...
Thank you, assessors.
...presentation and all.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we'll go on to the rest of our agenda, and it is a little bit behind, so we have Mary King. Hi, you want to come on up? Is this for the farm at Ravenbrook?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Do you want to just, you're on TV, first of all. It's a nice opportunity for you to advertise, so if you want to just tell a little bit about what you're trying to do, and then we can deal with the request for a one-day liquor licenses.
Correct. One-day liquor license to serve at...
Come on, right up to the mic, yep.
One-day liquor license to serve at Ravenbrook.
Okay, and you're going to do what?
Serve alcohol from Brewery 44.
Well, not that, but... But I was really trying to get you to tell us is what your event is about.
Oh.
Well, so listen, I believe, everybody that friend of their farmers markets, and they had this idea from this fall, to have this event at the fall at the end, vendors and stuff like that, so they asked us if you wanted to do that. The pilot was supposed to, it sounded fun, and hopefully go forward to the three-part event.
Application first.
So I'm...
Oh, that's...
This is for the previously approved event that we went through last night.
Yes.
All right, so this will be at the farm at Ravenbrook on Wood Street?
Correct.
And the dates would be September 27th, 28th, October 11th, 12th, 13th, 18th, 19th, 25th, 26th, November 1st to November 2nd, and it will be, the business organization is Upland Ale Company, DBA Brewery 44.
Correct.
All right, very good. Any discussion from the Board?
What are you planning on serving, guys? Is it beer, wine, hard alcohol? What do we have? Beer?
Beer.
Just beer?
Wine.
Okay. Awesome.
Okay, I'll move that we approve the one-day liquor licenses as requested.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Good luck, guys.
Try it out.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, so we have 6:20. It's not quite 6:20 yet, so do you want to do the warrants and stuff while we give us another five minutes?
I move to a firm approval of the following warrant and commitment, vendor warrant number 20, for $41,017.78. Ambulance commitments, August 26, 2024 through 9/1, 2024, for $145,831.46.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, okay?
I move to approve of the following warrant and commitments: school warrant number 21 for $245,868.97. Payroll warrant number 22 for $449,223.91. Vendor warrant number 23 for $76,738.47. Withholding warrant number 24 for $155,595.85. And mobile home park fee number 9 for $5,160.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? We still have a couple minutes, please.
We do. We have three minutes.
All right, how about this signature form?
Oh, yeah. Let's see. So this is, you've signed a few of these. This is just if the department head delegates to a non-department head to sign on their behalf if they're out for payroll. So this is the case with the Municipal School Building Committee, since Sue Johnson is the designated alternate.
All right, so Municipal School Building, right. Okay, so Susan Johnson would be the designated one. I'll make the motion that we approve the signature authority as requested.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Pass that along.
Thank you.
Um... Yeah, I guess they've got a minute for that. All right, so, just a motion.
Yep, just a motion to open the warrant. We'll close on November 4th. Yeah, November 4th.
Okay, all right, so we do have a special town meeting planned, and we will be dealing mostly with zoning things, but we need to open the warrant, so I would move that tonight we open the special town meeting warrant, with the special town meeting being December 16th, 2024, and the warrant to close as of November 4th, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Now it's got to be 21.
It's got to, let me check the watch here. Oh, we got two more minutes. Keep going.
We had on our agenda discussion of the town council appointment and the town accountant. And I think we're going to, I recommend we pass over those tonight. We don't plan to make any changes as things stand right now. We thought we might have had a town accountant candidate, but that just hasn't come to fruition. So...
That hasn't what? Yes, you said that hasn't what? You're going to go to town...
Fruition. Fruition.
Fruition, I knew it. Sorry.
Okay, question? Yes.
On subject B4, I was trying to raise my hand. Amy Troop, Tun Hill side of. Kind of curious why we're doing a special town meeting during the holidays again, when people have holiday parties, chorus concerts, plays, they have to go shopping. We're changing the zoning bylaws and voting on a very contentious issue, and I think that we should be having it not during the holidays, because it's really unfair to the people, because, again, it's Hanukkah, Christmas, Festivus for the rest of us. You know, this is really not okay, because we bought houses in this town with certain zoning bylaws that protect our houses and our condos, and putting it during the Christmas season is not fair to not one of us. So why is it in December again? I mean, you know that you removed me from the zoning bylaw review committee because I'm against MBTA housing, so you obviously have a push for it. So you want to tell the town why you're trying to push MBTA housing on us during the holidays? Is that our Christmas present?
I think in our last meeting we discussed this, and we pointed out that the MBTA zoning issue is one of the drivers for a special town meeting. We have to have a vote. We have to at least propose to the town and let the town have the opportunity to vote before December 31st. When the zoning was worked out, including through state, through a state consultant, we presented that in, I think, May to the state authority that would essentially have to approve the bylaw anyway. They asked them to tell, give us preliminary approval. It took them 94 days to get back to us. They did. That was by our last meeting, and so counting the amount of time necessary to have the planning board hold a public hearing, we really run into either the very end of November or the beginning of December, and it was our judgment that the 16th was the most accommodating day that we could come up with.
And what is today? Today is September what?
10th.
Right. So you, so we could, I know that at the last meeting, one of the dates that you put up on the Board was November 5th, which is completely insane, since everybody knows that's the presidential election and the gym would be upheld anyways, but I'm pretty sure that was one of the dates that you had at the meeting, November 5th, which is just like, not even thinking. Well, I remember, because I was here.
Okay.
But regardless, you should be putting it not during the holiday season, and again, this is not a tyranny. We should be saying no, because your residents don't want cities. We already don't have enough water, and the senior overlay district already has somebody appointed that shouldn't be there, and pushing it right through. So thank you very much for all the hard work you're doing for the residents.
Thank you. All right, it's 20 after. We have a scheduled appointment with Tabor McSherry, update on his dog plan for a nuisance dog. I don't see Mr. McSherry in the audience, and we haven't heard from him one way or another, have we?
We have not. We've reached out to him several times. We asked him to provide a written plan with more documentation after your last meeting. We also asked him to be in attendance tonight.
Any acknowledgement of the receipt of the meeting tonight or anything like that?
No, we told him last week.
We told, yeah, we talked to him, so he knows.
To get a more definitive plan and get it to you guys by hand to win the sticker we have got. He didn't email it.
So to piggyback on what Tom said, he knew about the meeting. It's not a case of him not receiving the message.
He spoke with him in our office.
Okay. So we have, we have some reports you guys have.
We do, so I did speak with counsel regarding this, and in his opinion, the lack of response does allow for the Board to basically seek a criminal complaint. If they fail to comply with the hearing authority, which would be you guys as the Board of Selectmen, it's punishable, first offense by a fine of not more than $500, or imprisonment for not more than 60 days, and then second offense is a fine of not more than $1,000 or 90 days of jail. And then also, if they're found to be in violation, the Board could ask that the animal control officer issue a seven-day notice to seize the dog.
Does counsel also recommend that we advise him of these things first, or...
Yeah, so it would be a recommendation to notify him within seven days of the potential seizure of the animal.
Okay, what's the Board's question?
I mean, I don't really have an appetite to fine him $500 or jail time. I just had an appetite for him to comply with the original request, which was to take[1528.83] to take the offenses, the multiple offenses seriously and documented as such. And I don't know if there's a second chance and a final chance here before we want to go down that road, but I think clearly there's some sort of lack of communication in terms of the seriousness of what happened and his willingness to take responsibility for it. So I'm open to suggestion. I don't know if that means we have to act on one of those two things that Cody just referenced, but.
I would recommend that we prepare a letter to Mr. McSherry, that we have it served on him at, by the police department, and in that letter indicate that the board is considering finding you in violation of their order in two regards. One, because he hasn't done the report that we asked him to do, and two, he didn't show up today. And then that, you know, we will give him essentially one more chance, we'll schedule another hearing, maybe our next meeting, and advise him in that letter of all these potential courses of action that could be pursued. That'd be my recommendation.
That's a good recommendation.
Okay, Tom?
I'm good with that.
So I don't think we need to motion.
Nope, I'll prepare the letter and have it delivered to him this week.
And so we'll put on the agenda for 10:24? I'm sorry, 9:24?
Yes.
September 24th.
Yeah, next meeting.
Okay, so new business. We have town government study committee possible appointments. I see everybody here, and I'm just going to go down the line as they're on my list, and that would start with Mrs. Nolan. So do you want to come on up just for a minute and we can have an opportunity to, just to talk about this?
I think she's new to town.
Bring a tremendous amount of knowledge, and I am thrilled that you're willing to take on this job. I just want to say, though, that the, the way I see this advisory committees, an advisory committee to the board who would eventually either adopt the recommendations or not, or partially, or however, and then make recommendations to town meeting. But it, it's kind of a long process, I believe, because it's going to require that committee to do a thorough study of how we run our operation now and what the options are to hopefully improve it. And I mean, I know you're certainly a hardworking person, as all the candidates are. I don't think that's a question here. But I do, I do want to make sure that I ask each of you to, is it understandable to you that it would be, it's not something that's going to happen like we'll be resolving it in a month, right? I think it's probably going to take at least a good part of a year to work our way through because we don't want to do something halfway, right? This is a big deal. So any comments you might have about it?
How often do you expect to meet?
It'd be up to the board itself, up to that committee. I would think, I mean, just using the zoning bylaw one, that we were meeting once a month, but if we needed to do more than that or less, whatever it would take, it'd probably be, I mean, the committee itself would have to decide how to handle it, maybe divide things up, you know, somebody looks on this issue, somebody looks on that issue. I mean, but that would be the, that would be, to me, that would be a process that the committee itself would have to agree on and figure out how to do, do it best.
So I feel that I have a lot of varied experience in town hall. I started as the secretary to the zoning and planning, worked with the building inspector at, at some point. I have worked for Board of Health before I came, went into the accountant's office. I spent 15 years as the town accountant. So I have a lot of municipal knowledge, not just of the way municipalities run, but the way the town of Halifax runs. I'm absolutely willing to be in it for a year or whatever it takes. And if I can be helpful, that's what I'd like to do.
Fantastic. Anybody on the board have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just, I don't know if it's a question or a comment. I just, I think it's important for something like this, and I wasn't here, I'm fairly new, and I wasn't here when the zoning bylaw committee was formed, and I know that's, you know, nearing its conclusion. I think it's important to go in with an open mind, and I trust that you would be able to do that, with no preconceived notions of what you'd like to see and have an open mind, whether it's A versus B or somewhere in the middle. I think that's important for all of you, not just, not just you Sandy, but.
No, I agree. I think it's important.
Going in with an open mind and hearing other people's opinions and finding common ground and maybe some gray area that's appropriate. I think that's just a board well served.
I think I can do that.
John?
No, I'm excited that you threw your name in the ring.
Yeah.
And to echo what Tom says, I'm looking at the list of candidates here, I'm excited because it's folks from different viewpoints. You know, I think some of the best committees don't always agree on everything. So as long as everybody in the committee realizes that it's a group effort, you know, and that everybody works together and doesn't draw lines in the sand and that kind of stuff, I think the, the idea of everybody from a different vantage point has me excited that it will be a well-thought-out committee.
Great.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mary? Same comments, that, you know, this is, I see this as a big effort. What we're trying to do is consider reorganizing how government works in Halifax, and it's not something that we can make a decision on quickly. And I think it has to be a decision that's made thoughtfully, looking at whatever potential pitfalls there might be also, so we want to be really careful about it.
Honestly, my thing, I was coming here more to ask you guys questions about what your intentions are because I'm not 100% sure this is the right thing for me. I've been interested and I'm trying, and I, but I find sometimes I have to know if my, you know, if I really want to be in this for the long haul and if I really want to put up with the, you know, it'll be frustrating, I can tell. I've done stuff before. So I guess I was looking at the outline. You're looking at like two years. Is there a reason it's going to take that long?
It, it could be six months, it could be a year. Really, the question is how fast that committee can, can come to its recommendation. And again, it's not something we want to do overnight.
No, I don't mean that. I just mean that I, there's, there tends to be a lot of like lag time, and I feel like the town does a lot of things that take a really long time. If we could be more efficient, that's just what my job is now. I went back to the corporate world. My job is about efficiency, productivity, and getting things done without the hemming and hawing and not hours of discussion before something is decided. So I get that there is a very, I know that this is really important, and I think there's a lot of things to look at, but I, looking at two years of this, I could never commit to that. I'm just saying that. I could see if it's going to take, start to finish a year, but two years to look at something like this, where in a year, some people may not be here, we might have new somebody else, we might have a new town accountant, everything could change and we might have to start over. I don't, that's one of my big concerns. Have anybody else been appointed yet, or is this the first time?
No.
This is the first time? Okay.
This is never, we've never had, as far as I know, we've never had a committee like this before or had this intensive study of it.
No, I didn't know if you've already spoken to other people that are interested yet, or if this is the first time. So so far, there are just three citizens at large?
There's a fourth who couldn't make it tonight, and she's scheduled for our next, our next meeting.
Okay. I guess one of the things is, is do we have, will we, would the group have an outline from either town council or from Cody about how far outside the box we can, or do we have to do something very much within a municipal circle or square that we have to stay in so we're really not going to be able to change that much?
So we've, Cody and I have had discussions with current town council, who actually is very experienced in this type of thing. He's done this in other towns, charters or whatever. And he's the one who recommended to us that we establish a, a committee of the board, advising the board of selectmen. And he also would, we would, the way we envision this, one, the chairman of this committee is going to be some member of the board of selectmen, and that's for a couple of reasons. One, because that'll keep it moving, and two, it'll keep some advised as to what's going on so we don't end up in different directions. And three, because the selectmen have access to certain resources that maybe an independent committee wouldn't have. One of those resources is town council. So we can arrange to do that at whatever, maybe in the very beginning even, would have town council give us a little primer on, you know, this is what, this is what this type of work can do and what you can't do. I think as far as that, speaking with town council, I mean, we, we have an open slate here. We can rework the town, you know, we can't obviously make it a kingdom or something, but we can follow certain procedures. Some of the stuff that, that you suggested in the past, like whether or not certain positions ought to be appointed as opposed to elected, all of that kind of thing.
But they've all been voted down before. So if we sit down and decide that we want to have five selectmen, we want to have all the elected officials be appointed, and it's already been voted down, are we going to just be spinning our wheels to set something all up that we go to town meeting and everyone says, nope, we already said this, we're not allowed to vote on it again?
Well, you know, town meeting can do anything it wants, right? So we can't guarantee that. However, our experience is that if, if a well-thought-out plan is well-considered, and I think, you know, town meetings, and part of that well-thought-out plan would be dealing, like for example, making, we talked about making, I'm just going to take one, the clerk as a appointed position. If, if, if the committee examines that and talks with the clerk, looks at options, does all of that kind of thing, and comes up with a recommendation, whether yes or no, most of the time, town meeting does consider it, right? They consider it well.
I don't agree with that.
Can I, can I just piggyback to Mary? I know the, the last time at town meeting, that was a citizen's petition, right, for the, for the article. I do echo what John says, where if you present to the public, look at, this is, this is research we've done for a year. This is, this is well-thought-out, this is, you know, we've kicked the tires, it's not a citizen coming forward with something. This is, you know, a member, you know, selectmen, we've had, you know, folks all around. So I feel like if you present to them, we're not just flying by the seat of our pants, this is a well-thought-out article, I think you, you might have more, more of a shot.
And we're also talking about not just making one change, we're talking about reviewing the entire structure and maybe only making one change, but at least we've reviewed the entire structure to say, okay, this is how we think Halifax would run most efficiently.
But what I'm saying is, I know in the past, if you've brought something up to be voted at town meeting, you're not allowed to do it another time, that this would not fall under any of that?
That's a different, that, would you, which, only, the only substance to that, I think it's a zoning change or something.
Two years.
It's like one or two, it's one or two things, like a zoning change, it can't be brought up until a town, you know, a later, anything else that's already been brought up once can always be brought up again, maybe not in that town meeting necessarily, but certainly again at a later time.
Okay. Okay, are you going to wait till after a new town accountant is appointed to start this? Because I feel like it would be very hard to start with, if someone's going to commit in the middle and as far as financial, I did watch some of the interviews for the other candidate, and I know that he didn't take the position, but I'm like, if someone comes in with different ideas or different things, is it going to change what we do as a committee midway? I know Sandy's currently the acting town accountant, so could she also be, is she not?
No.
Oh, okay. So, okay, I thought you were saying.
Sandy just retired.
Okay, well, I knew she was retiring, but I thought she was staying on to help bring in the next person.
The, the town accountant wouldn't be part of the committee, at least in our vision. The vision is for past citizens at large and the chairman being a board of selectmen, with non-voting member being the town administrator, and then consulting the town council. That would be the committee. And if that committee says, you know, we, we need more resources one way or another, then, you know, that comes back to the board and the board decides yes or no to do that. So if you think the accountant should be involved, we certainly do. We don't have anybody right now in line, and it's been kind of a long process because Sandy's got big shoes and we've had a hard time filling them.
Okay. What else do you have?
Sorry, still?
Sorry.
It's okay. I hope you consider, Mary, I really do. You're, you're passionate about the town, there's no doubt about it. You bring up good ideas, you're well-thought-out, you attack things with energy. I mean, fundraisers I've, I've done that you're involved with, you set a goal and you, you don't stop till you hit a goal. So I really do hope that you consider coming on the committee.
When are you considering starting the committee or having the first meeting? Or when are you?
So we, we talked about, we want to interview everybody first, and we'll probably make the, and the other thing is, we will just keep the application process open up until our next meeting. And at that point, then we'll make our decision in appointing everybody, and whoever is lucky enough on the board here to end up being a chairman will call a meeting, you know, shortly right there afterwards to get it moving. And then to set the agenda, and the same thing, the committee itself, it, if they like to meet every Monday, that's fine, if they want to meet every third Thursday, I mean, whatever, whatever works for the committee, it's up to them.
Okay, I just hope it's a, it's more of a condensed, only because I know with the other committees we've had, they're so long drawn out. I know the bylaw committee, whatever, started out with so many people and you can't meet, and I hope it's just the idea of like, this is super important and it needs to be done in a very efficient manner. Like, I don't mind, like, committing to a time period, but I'm not committing to two years for anything.
And that's one, that's one of the reasons I hope you consider this committee, because I feel like you will help condense things, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Walters?
Gentlemen.
You must have some thoughts about this, otherwise you wouldn't.
Just a couple.
Just a few.
Just a couple.
I think, just personally, everything that, that has been mentioned in the financial management report that was issued April of 2024 is everything we should be addressing inside of this committee. And it covers a, a wide spread of items, but I also look at it as a huge opportunity for the town to look at everything it's doing, longstanding processes, what people are doing, how they're doing it, and just creating something that's like super efficient, responsive, and accountable to the, to the residents, because that's really the purpose of the town government, is to ensure that the people who are here are getting the services that they, they need, that they should be getting on a regular basis, and then, and any issues that come up are handled as expeditiously as possible and as transparent as possible for the people involved in the town. And I, you know, whatever, is it going to take a year? I don't know. There's a number of things I think we need to make sure we're addressing when we're doing the committee work, which is public input. How are we going to get, we, we need to have public meetings, talk to the people out in the town, send out surveys through whatever fashion we want to send out surveys, look for input and feedback from them, and incorporate that into the work that we're doing. Because the only way it's going to get across and get done at town meeting is by having that public input and it being added into the work that the, that the committee is doing.
You really got this thought through. I love, that's fantastic. I've worked with Jim on the zoning bylaw committee for the last year. He's a tiger. He's just, and aces. Smart, does a great job, and has the Mary Ravanese opinion that we don't monkey around. We don't have committee meetings just to have committee meetings. We get them done and move on. The zoning bylaw committee meets every month for about an hour, and we get a lot done.
Yeah, we get a lot done in that time.
Any questions?
No, same, same thing with Mary. I echo what John says, you, you set your sights on things and you, you look to get stuff done. So I would love to have you on the committee.
Absolutely. Yeah, I just appreciate all three of you coming in and even considering it's volunteer work, it's hard work, but it's important work. And I think it's, you know, I think it's great to have public interest and people continuing to do the work of all of us.
Okay, so we will just, just make an announcement that we are still accepting applications. We do have one other candidate that is expected to come in on our next meeting, but at our next meeting, we will make our, we'll make, we intend to make appointments.
Who was the other candidate?
Kelly something?
Carrie Sellers.
Thank you.
And just as a note, anyone submitting an application, we need to do so by the 18th. They can't do it on the 24th because we didn't have a long agenda.
Right, okay, okay. So by, let me just make that clear for the audience, by October, no, September 18th. September 18th, we'll.
Have to be submitted.
We'll have closed all the applications, so if anyone else is interested, that, that would be the time to do it. But we have three excellent candidates so far, and we'll wait and see what the fourth one brings.
Thank you, guys.
All right, fantastic, fantastic. Thank you for your interest, it's wonderful. Ambulance, did we ever do this ambulance abatement?
We haven't yet. We have this one here.
Oh, okay. All right, so.
Sure.
August 2024 ambulance abitements for $84,592.87.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Suicide Prevention Day?
Yes, so we received a request from, let's see. So it's National Suicide Prevention Month, so we received a request from the Plymouth County Suicide Prevention Coalition that the board declare September Suicide Prevention Month in Halifax and also September 10th, which is today, designated as Suicide Prevention Day.
What does that mean?
So you would sign the proclamation here and just formally recognize it, and it's a show of support to the, the national, the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention and the Plymouth County Suicide Prevention Coalition. This aligns with your policies of the national recognition. We could light the town hall up, it would align with that because it is a nationally recognized month.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be honored to, to be part of this. I've had friends, actually today, post and express how important today is to them because they've actually had attempts to take their own lives. So I, I would be wholeheartedly behind a, a motion to light the town hall. The colors, I believe, are a purple and a blue in honor of Suicide Prevention Month. I think it's a great cause, and I really hope that we get behind it.
Tom, any questions?
No, I echo those thoughts.
Do you want to make a motion as?
Sure, I'd love to. Make a motion to proclaim September 2024 as National Suicide Prevention Month here in Halifax, as well as today, September 10th, 2024, as Suicide Prevention Day in the town of Halifax.
Okay, any, do I second?
I'll second that, yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Flower and Soul?
So this is an updated host community agreement. So Massachusetts general law requires one of two things, with every marijuana dispensary retailer that you have in a community, you either need a host community agreement or you need a waiver from the board of a host community agreement. We have existing host community agreements in place with Flower and Soul, as well as our other dispensary, Elevated Roots. As part of the annual renewal process, these dispensaries have to submit their current host community agreements to the Cannabis Control Commission, which is the state agency that regulates the marijuana industry, and they review those agreements for, make sure they're consistent with the existing regulations. When Flower and Soul went to submit their existing host community agreement, it bounced back that the agreement is no longer consistent with current regulations, primarily for the fact of that 3% impact fee. So when it first was adopted, the towns, you, you could adopt a 3% impact fee that the dispensaries were to pay the towns, and that's what our host community agreements had. The regulations have since changed, you know, we, so the dispensary would, Flower and Soul would be on the hook to pay that 3% impact fee through the date of this new agreement, which would be today, and then going forward, they would, that's no longer in there because that's part of the new regulations, it's not required. So in speaking with council, we are recommending that we, the board, vote to approve the template model. This is right from the Cannabis Control Commission, and the reason for that is, is we know the state will approve it. The last thing we want to do is hold up these businesses. If they don't get their renewals in time, it would prevent them from remaining open, which is something we don't want to do. So it's effectively the same agreement with removing that 3% impact fee. We would still get the 3% local tax that the state collects, but going forward for Flower and Soul, we would not get the 3% impact fee.
Just so we know, do you have an idea of how much money we collected in the last year or so under that part of it?
Between the two dispensaries for the last fiscal year was around $185,000.
So that'll be money that we won't be getting.
Correct.
But we don't have any sale, we have no choice now.
Unfortunately not. No, the regulations, regulations have changed, and the state is requiring us to change this. So council's reviewed this, it's pretty, it's a boilerplate agreement, and then the only other thing, if you do vote, would be to allow me to sign on your behalf because it's one signature.
But we still, to be clear, do expect to collect that revenue or that in 3% impact tax up until through today.
We are operating under that. We feel as though the, the legislation and the regulations that change that 3% are not retroactively applied to host community agreements that were signed prior to that date, and that is, that, that's what we're confident in, that's what council's confident in. You know, there's an existing court case with the city of Haverhill where this exact matter is being brought up. The Superior Court has ruled that it is not retroactively applied, meaning that that amount is due, so we have let our dispensaries know that we, we still anticipate that they dispensaries know that we, we still anticipate that they need to pay that.
So this is just for Flower and Soul. Is the other one, I don't know the name of it.
Elevated Roots. Elevated Roots, we're following the same process with them, so.
It just hasn't come up yet?
Yep, so if, if they get a denial letter from the Cannabis Control Commission, the board will take that up at that point. But, you know, we, we are, we're confident in our contracts and our agreements, and we are waiting to be told otherwise. So in this case, we were told by the state that there was an issue, so we're going to wait if that comes up with Elevated Roots, and if so, we'll address it with them as well.
All right. Any comments or questions from the board? So you want us to move to approve the model host community unit and?
With Flower and Soul.
With Flower and Soul and authorize you to sign for us, right?
Correct.
So I will make that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Oh, Board of Selectmen Goals? I thought we did this last.
Well, we reviewed the previous year goals, but you didn't vote to adopt new goals. So we did go through, received your feedback on those goals. Since then, I went through, I removed some of the items that we've accomplished, and also just updated several of the items to continue to, to keep up with. And then I would ask if the board agrees and everything looks good that you adopt these for the 2024, 2025.
Okay, any discussion from questions, comments?
No, I read them. They make sense.
Go on, five, thank you.
Set on that? All right, so we'll take a motion to approve the updated 2024, 2025 Board of Selectmen.
I will make a motion to update the 2024, 2025 Board of Selectmen Goals.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right, that brings us to the zoning issue, right? That's all that's left?
Yes, let me just, yeah, put the map up there.
Oh, okay, put the map up. All right, so at the upcoming town meeting, or the zoning, zoning bylaw review committee has completed its work. And again, we did this in a year. We just started last August and got it done now. And it will be making, we're making two recommendations. One is a revision and updating to the current zoning bylaw. It's very detailed, obviously. You folks, you guys have it in your package there. And we've made changes. Most of the changes include things such as reorganized sections, we combined some definitions, some sort of tech, almost typographical type of things like that. We also added into the, into the zoning, proposed, adding into the zoning bylaw a section on accessory dwelling units, which is taken basically from change in the state law that took place, I think, like, two months ago.
Yeah, a month and a half ago.
Yeah, which now allows them as a matter of right. So we, we asked council to come up with a, with a bylaw that does that, and did. We made some changes to the site plan review bylaw, and most of that, a lot of that had to do with some of the issues raised by the MBTA zoning. They, they looked at our, our planning, our site plan review aspect and said it needs to be updated, which we did. And we added in a, a section on blighted properties, which gives the town a little bit more ability to deal with properties that have been, become an eyesore, become dangerous, that type of thing. There's a few in town that we've been working on in other ways, but this bylaw gives us a little more teeth to it. I think that's pretty much the highlights of the zoning bylaw change. Jim, am I getting that pretty close?
Yeah, no, that's, that's.
So that's one proposal. That's one proposal. The other one is the MBTA zoning bylaw issue, housing issue. And I, I am the chairman of that committee. However, this is something that I, I want to write, I wanted to say as a presentation to the board and to the public as to what we're doing with the MBTA. So we are going to propose a, a bylaw which we think will comply with the MBTA. But before I get to that, I just want to have a statement here. So, "The MBTA housing law is an example of what is wrong with Massachusetts state government. This law is a heavy-handed, uninspired, ill-considered, one-size-fits-all supposed solution to what has become a cause celebre among state politicians. The statute, which runs a mere three paragraphs and which passed almost unanimously through the legislature, arbitrarily targets communities that are near train stations with a mandate to change local zoning regardless of what the community itself in its wisdom or wants or needs. To back up this callous, imperious dictate from the state are significant penalties, including the loss of potential funding for projects that would actually benefit the citizenry, such as grants for infrastructure. Oh, and by the way, this fund source which state politicians so graciously grant to local communities is comprised of money collected from the citizens through taxation. The grants being comprised of money which the citizens have paid to the state in taxes is then, quote, granted by the benevolence of the state back to the persons who paid the tax in the first place. Withholding from communities who, communities who do not bend to the MBTA housing mandate has become a weapon of choice to secure their compliance. Moreover, the state, Massachusetts State Attorney General has weighed in, and in a high-handed manner declared the law, quote, mandatory. So now, instead of using the state attorney general's office resources to chase real criminals, she will and has sued what she has decided are scofflock communities, otherwise her constituents. To be clear, the MBTA housing law was created by our state representatives and senators, approved by our former governor, and is being vigorously prosecuted by our attorney general. All of these persons are elected by us, the citizens and voters. If the citizens are unhappy with the law, then we should let those persons who are responsible for creating the law, enforcing the law, and able to change or abandon the law know. Anyone who is unhappy with this law is best served by directing their opinions to the place where it can make a difference and accomplish change. In that case, it would be reasonable and wise to contact our state representative, senator, governor, and attorney general, and ask them to change or abandon this law. They have the power to do so if they wish. Now, the Board of Selectmen, in my view, has the responsibility to make decisions and recommendations which are in the best interest of Halifax and its residents, regardless of whether we like or approve of any state law or requirement. To do this work correctly and effectively, the board should, and indeed we have, thoroughly examine the issue at hand, which is how best to cope with the MBTA housing law. About one year ago, the board appointed an ad hoc committee to review our zoning bylaws, to make recommendations for any change or update, and in particular, to examine how best to address the MBTA housing law. This committee has considered the views of town residents, the opinions of knowledgeable professionals, and reviewed the state requirements. Using the guiding principle of what is in the best interest of Halifax and its residents, the committee is making its considered recommendation, which will be the establishment of an overlay multifamily district as commanded by the law, which, but which in practical effects does not change much of anything that is already present in town, and for the most part, confirms existing fact. To be in compliance with the MBTA housing law, the town must, before the end of this year, vote to establish a zoning overlay district, which allows, as of right, the building of multifamily dwellings in an area substantially within one-half mile radius of the train station. What the law does not require, though, is the actual building of anything. Simply establishing a zone within the geographic area around the train station, which allows, as of right, multifamily dwellings, will satisfy the law. The zoning bylaw review committee, with the very capable assistance of town council Rick Hucksum, and a state-authorized consultant who specializes in MBTA housing compliance, have developed a proposed bylaw which we are confident will meet the state's compliance command. And what's more, the proposed zoning change will, for the most part, confirm what already exists. Let me explain. The MBTA housing law does not, and I emphasize, does not require any new building. It only insists that we designate an area around the train station which provides for multifamily development. As it turns out, without before realizing this to be so, Halifax is already in principle in compliance. If we draw a circle, and direct your attention to the map up, up there that's on the TV screen, the circle being the orange circle. So if we draw a circle with a half-mile radius using the train station, which is that red dot that Cody's putting on there, the train station as a center, a large portion of the area inside the circle is already supporting multifamily development. Twin Lakes Condominiums is by definition a multifamily development. What we are proposing then is to place an overlay zone on this area, and you can see it in the white outline, identifying Twin Lakes Development Property and certain abutting property to more precisely describe what is already in place. Since the law does not require that anything new actually be built, and since Halifax already has an area supporting a multifamily development, putting the proposed zoning change in place resolves any issue about compliance with the state decree. I liken what we are proposing to giving a fresh coat of paint to an existing wall. Nothing of substance changes except what it is being called. In this case, Twin Lakes and certain abutting property will officially now be a multifamily district, which it already is and has been for over 30 years. Is this the result that the state legislature, governor, and attorney general intended? Does this solution address any supposed political issues? Who knows, and frankly, I don't think we should care. We're told that compliance is mandatory, and so we can simply follow exactly what the law requires. The Board of Selectmen has an obligation to present to town meeting its options regarding the MBTA housing law, that we are doing. Whether town meeting agrees or not to implement this plan is totally within the right and power of town meeting. However, I highly recommend a positive vote implementing this zoning change. The proposed zoning overlay district and bylaw puts our town in compliance with the MBTA housing law. What's more, we are already supporting multifamily housing, which covers most of the area to which the overlay district will apply. Whether one agrees with the MBTA housing law or not, refusing to adopt a proposed bylaw is short-sighted, all things considered. So if you look at the map there, the white outline is the overlay district. I think it's the purple is Twin Lakes, is that right?
These four parcels are Twin Lakes. One, two, three, four. And then there's this fifth parcel, which is the former Halifax Garden Company, which is that kind of weird, you know, parcel here.
So as you can see, there are certain small areas that are not part of Twin Lakes, and also the area around our garden company, which has, frankly, very little buildable area in it anyway. So if there were to be additional buildings, somebody, developer, bought one of the, two of these smaller lots and decided to put them in, it would be within, within the same district, the same area as what's already there, which is Twin Lakes. And frankly, there's not a lot of room there to build too many additional multifamily units. And the bylaw, the proposed bylaw would kind of restrict the type of building that could go in there, that would be more or less in conformance with what's already at Twin Lakes. So, that's what we're proposing. That's what will be on the town meeting warrant in December. Questions from the board?
I don't want to, I don't, first off, the state is okay with this plan, correct?
They have, we sent it to the, the exact same people that will ultimately decide, well, the attorney general has to decide too. But there's, what's he called, the Housing Authority?
Executive Office of Housing in Libable Communities has a team that reviews these for the initial compliance, and then also, once you, if your town votes it, it's the same team. That's the team that John mentioned earlier, we sent, and it took them 90-plus days to review. They sent us back some feedback. We've adjusted the things, that's very small, minor things. One of them's a mapping thing, bringing it to the center of the, the roadways. And we've made those adjustments. And with that, we don't foresee any issues getting attached.
They've already told us. Everything's good, except, I think it was five things, three of which were like, just, we want you to draw your map a certain way, which we did.
And I don't, I don't want to speak for the zoning bylaw review committee, but I believe your, your charge was, as a committee, was to try to come up with a plan that has us in compliance, but has as little effect as possible on the town of Halifax. Is that safe to say, or?
I'd say our charge really was to review the whole circumstance and to make whatever recommendation we thought would be the best in interest of the town. And I can tell you for a fact that the zoning bylaw committee was not enthusiastic about having to even consider the MBTA plan. But once we brought in a, the consultant, who is, that's what he does. He specializes in going around the different communities and figuring out how they can comply with this, believe it or not, there's such a job now. And he's a state-authorized person. And when we told him, you know, this is what's in Halifax, where, you know, what can we work with, and we finally focused on that area around it, which is next to the train station, and realized that that would, when he did his, he did some calculations with the amount of potential area there, again, not, we don't have to build anything. So if their building's already on there, that's fine. And so with all the calculations he did, he, he's the one who helped us come up with the, with the overlay district. And that, the zoning bylaw committee is saying at this point, you know, what, why, why should we fight with the state about this if we don't have to?
Sure.
We're gonna, we're gonna agree with them to do what they told us to do, even though we don't like it. But it's not, we don't, we think the impact is, is very, probably no impact, but if anything, very insignificant.
And that, and that would be the best of, of both worlds for me, if we could somehow stay in compliance, but have minimal change to our town. And I will admit, I have to go through this even more, but ideally, that's the ideal situation. I, I hope that we can somehow get to that.
Okay.
You know, again, with the volunteer committee, thank you all for your time and effort and, you know, thought into this. You know, I think it's one thing to do the research and get everything in line. I think one thing that's important, as we've seen with other towns, is that now goes in front of everybody else, the people at town meeting, and they can take your work and time into consideration, but ultimately, you know, falls on the town. So I thank you for, you know, getting, chairing the board and getting it, getting it to where we are, preparing the work, which I know is arduous, but.
It's a lot of work, that's for sure.
But I think it's important to now know that it's never in everyone else's hands. We've done what we can do to be ready for it, and now in December, it gets there and the chips fall within that.
It's up to the town.
Absolutely.
The town, for whatever reason decides they just don't want to agree with us, that's, that's perfectly fine. We'll deal with the consequences, but we don't have to, so. Yes.
I have a few questions. What were the other four things that the state needed changed with your proposed MBTA bylaw?
I'm, I didn't hear that. Say that again.
What were the other four items that the state wanted you to change?
So the site plan review process, they were concerned about that it wasn't consistent with state law. They were, the map that we submitted.
What specifically with the site plan?
They didn't give specifics. They asked that our council review it and.
How would you know what to change if they didn't give you any specifics?
That's why they asked our legal counsel to review it and ensure consistency with state law.
The second thing?
The second was, the map that we submitted only brought the overlay to the edge of the right-of-way. They like to see it in the middle of the right-of-way, so a very nitpicking item. Let's see, let me pull up the letter.
That's the one that you already said, right? So that we have three more, right?
Yeah.
One of them was access.
One of the parcels that we initially included, they claimed did not have direct access without going through another parcel, so they, and it's, if you look, it's that bottom-left parcel that they're stating may not have direct access. So they asked that we just look at that and either remove it or provide proof that there is direct access to it. So we're updating the map, so that parcel actually will not be included in the, in the final submission to town meeting. And then they just also requested that, that our town bylaw map obviously needs to be updated as part of town meeting, so that would need to be submitted with the bylaw change. And, and then there was just a discrepancy we had. It was a clerical error in the, you have to submit a compliance model, so it's like an Excel sheet. We have put all the numbers in. There was a, one number in there that didn't match with the draft bylaw. We, it, one said 5,000 square feet and one said 10. So it was just a matter of not conforming. So we made the two conform.
Okay. I, I would like to point out that it's sort of important to know that Rockport has a huge lawsuit that. lawsuit that everybody in the entire state can join, and Milton suing, because it's, the attorney general is using our money against us, which is illegal. It's called tyranny. Like, this is why we need to stand up and not say yes to the kid who's asking for the cookie jar, because it's extremely important. I like your idea of the fact, and I'm actually surprised that you thought of this idea, but what would happen if it goes in front of the planning board? They're trying to take away all of those items that will allow us to decide. If you read the entire law, then you would understand that the planning board is taken out. They, that does not have to be within a half-mile district anymore of the MBTA zoning, and it has changed multiple times since inception. This is the danger of this, like stretch code, right? So stretch code is an overlay on the building code that makes everything green, okay? But when you're on the front lines with this, you're seeing a major problem with people because when it first got adopted, it made it seem like, okay, we'll just do a Harris test on the front door, find out all about the actual ventilation loss, okay? But what that actually means in the field is that if you're renovating a house, as an example, and you're getting a Harris test on the house, they're like, oh, well, you have air coming out between windows and doors, so we need you to tighten that up and then we need you to add a vent, okay? And that vent is now electric, and you're just venting where it already would have gone out, and it's an issue, and it's like really tied up a lot of houses. Then on July 1st, 2024, it made it that, the stretch code made it that, so it's an ever-changing law, which is why I'm saying it's a very scary thing that we need to heed, okay? So on July 1st, 2024, now those Harris tests have dropped from a 53 to a 42. So now, what is happening, and I don't know if you've heard about this yet, they're going into people's houses, and if you do a 30% renovation or a new house, there is no more oil heat, there is no more gas heat. They tell you to take it out, they tell you to take out your gas stove. These are not false things, these are really happening out on the streets. Some of your neighbors have actually gone through MassSave to get the heat pumps, mini-split systems. And they were told that they need to take out their oil tank in order to do any of those things. So the point here is, is that when we are listening to the state with these different things, and this is what I've been trying to point out, they change the law. So complying with, number one, somebody who's telling somebody that lives in the United States of America that they must do something, number one, is against the Constitution. Number two, one of the lawsuit items is that they're pressing down against Massachusetts state law, a 50% majority on zoning bylaw changes. That's really against all the people. So we need to start standing against this instead of complying with, because when are they going to come in and be like, oh, I'm sorry, but now this is a change, and we're going to do this, and we're going to do that? And I'll remind everybody again, that the grants that we will be able to get are not anything over, that's, that's going to even matter towards a new school? That's like, what, 80 million in Marshfield a couple of years ago? Can you even imagine what it would do to us if we start adding 750 units? Because I like the idea that this wouldn't happen, but this is, this is exactly where we have corporate people trying to buy that land right now. And it will ruin that whole area. We're not going to have enough room for all the traffic that would go there. So I like the idea of what you have here to block it, and, but it's not going to, because they're going to come in here and they're going to circumvent the planning board, they're going to circumvent the conservation, just like the senior overlay district is, and we're not going to have any power over stopping it. We're not going to have enough room, we don't have enough water. We have water bans right now that make it so that everybody can't even have their gardens water to wash their cars. How are we going to add these projects? So these, these are just some of the reasons, but there are ways that we can combat it. And there are multiple towns and tons of attorneys working at that, and I think that that avenue should be looked at, because nobody bought in Halifax to become a city. And nobody lives in this state that should be going against the Declaration of Independence and Constitution on how we actually were here. Remember, we left Britain to get away from tyranny, and we're supposed to not listen to government? They're supposed to be working for us? So this is like the first clue in the fact that we need to stop this, because, and I will add, look at Aurora, Colorado, look at Chicago, all of their buildings that have these apartments with the common entrances are being raided by illegal aliens. And if you haven't seen it, please look it up. These are all reasons that we need to say no and start joining in with the lawsuits against it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All right, so I would move that we, I don't know if the word we recommend-
Submit the-
Submit, thank you. Submit the proposed zoning bylaw changes and the MBTA zoning bylaw changes to the planning board, so that they can hold a public hearing, so that we can keep the process going.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay.
The state consultant that came around is hired by a state, the state, and it's a bureaucracy that they get paid to push MBTA housing. So just remember that.
Okay. Let's see, so whole business, we already did the MBTA, any change in your reports?
No, not really. We, I think I previously mentioned, we hired a conservation agent, so-
Oh, we didn't know, did we actually have them hired?
Maybe not. So Bridgewater made the hire, I should say. It's not our employee, it's Bridgewater's employee, but they included us in the process. She will be starting the first week of October. We haven't worked out schedules and stuff yet, but the idea is to split it 50/50, so 20 hours a week here, 20 hours a week in Bridgewater. So that'll be very good. Obviously, the town account recruitment is still ongoing. We're going to start another round of pushing that out and recruiting and hopefully getting some qualified applicants in and just continuing status quo, looking at different training opportunities for our boards and committees, sharing that information with them, and preparing for the special town meeting.
Okay. Nothing else to come before the board? I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second, I'll make that motion, sorry. Second. Long night.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next, it's unanimous, our next meeting is the 24th.
Yes.
Very good. Thanks all.